It's working. Good evening, everyone. Calling this October 10th, 2022, meeting of the Bethel Board of Education to order. It is 7:03 PM. Mrs. Hageman, we call the roll, please.
Mrs. Sebastian?
Here.
Mr. Elam?
Here.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Here.
Mr. King?
Here.
Let the record reflect Mrs. Donahue's absence this evening. Can everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our goal. Thank you, everyone. You'll notice a slightly different format to our agenda this evening. If you weren't following our work session, it'll be pretty different for those of you who haven't seen it yet. We'll move on to item two. Any additions to the agenda from anyone? I'll ask that first just very quickly. Okay. We need an approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda this evening?
I'll move.
Thank you, Mr. Elam. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Sebastian. When you're ready, Mrs. Hageman, please call the roll.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. Sebastian?
Yes.
Mr. Elam?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Okay, approved with a 4-0 vote. And then we need approval of minutes for the September 6th, September 12th, September 27th, and September 30th meetings. We had seen these at the work session, so everyone hopefully has had a chance to review. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes?
I'll move.
Thank you, Mrs. Sebastian. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Elam. When you're ready, Mrs. Hageman.
Mr. Elam?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Sebastian?
Yes.
Also approved with a 4-0 vote. Thank you, everyone. Okay, moving to item three. Under special presentation, so we had agreed to have a meeting with the trustees this evening, so welcoming our trustee guests. I see Mrs. Reese, I see Mr. Black, and I see Mrs. Van Herren. Welcome this evening for our brief joint meeting. We had said there was an agenda way early on. Has that changed that we were going to talk about kind of population and things with the school? I know that Mr. Crispin has been doing a pretty good job of updating everyone with our numbers and updates and things like that. Were there anything in addition you guys wanted to talk about before we get started? Excellent. No, that would be great. So we'll give you the floor to start, absolutely, yeah. Why not? Why not, Beth? Take the lead. I think your microphone needs to be turned on, please. It's tricky, I grant you. Yeah.
Thank you. All right.
Awesome, awesome.
Better?
Perfect.
Okay, now that we've gone through my five minutes of fame wasted by I can't turn on the microphone. So I'm Beth Van Herren. I'm one of the three township trustees, and this year on the ballot, Bethel Township has a 3.8 mil levy, which was first passed by voters in 2003. It's on as a replacement, which means that the home val- that the value of your taxes will be calculated using 2021 home values rather than 2002. We haven't asked for a replacement on this levy in the 19 years that it's been passed. We realize it is a difficult time to be asking for a replacement, but we do think that this is a levy that's vital to the township, and it's important that it passes. So I have some information. I'd be happy to hand it out to all of you, as well as the other lucky members of the audience. A lot of it was in our township newsletter. I realize that not everybody... Oh, thank you, Lori. Great demo there. We didn't even plan that. Awesome. But another thing that's really interesting to note, and you probably already know this, Tina, because I know you're on top of it, but in terms of taxation in Miami County, there's 26 different taxing entities like Troy, Elizabeth Township, Bethel, and there's 26 of them, and we are... There's only eight entities that have lower taxes than Bethel Township. Seventeen have higher taxes than us, so that's really important to note. And also, another thing is in terms of just your property tax, that was just for property taxes, but that doesn't actually give you the whole picture, because a lot of places like Troy have a school income tax, a school income tax, as well as a city income tax, and those don't offset each other. For example, folks who live in Carriage Trails pay the Bethel School's earned income tax. They also pay Huber Heights city income tax. So even though our property taxes are 18 out of 26, it doesn't give you a full picture of the overall taxes people are paying. And as far as income taxes for schools, Bethel Schools is the lowest in the county. We're 0.75% for an earned income tax, and the highest is Newton, but the next highest with 1.75, but Milton Union has 1.25. So kudos to the school board for doing everything they can, and the school to keep our taxes low. So I'll hand these to you and stop taking your time, and then I've got some after the meeting, because I'm sure everybody's going to want to read this before they go to bed tonight. Thank you.
Come back on. Take a second. Come online. Sorry about that. So thank you, Beth. That was... That's excellent to know. Lots of information I think a lot of people didn't, weren't aware of, so I appreciate that very much. I do not. Does anyone else on the board have questions for Beth?
I just want to say thank you to the township trustees for conserving the farm along 201 and Singer. That's one of the uses of the 3.8 mil levy. It's... I don't know how many people know, but it's a combination effort between Five Rivers Metro Park, the Ohio Public Works Commission, and Bethel Township.
Yeah, so it's the Siler property. Maybe people are familiar with it. It's 162 acres. It's directly across from the Carriage Trails entrance on 201, and the township has been working on this for probably over 20 years. I know Jerry Hurt, who was a township trustee before me, had talked to the father of the current owner back in the 80s. And the way it worked was OPWC has a Green Space Ohio program, and it puts a permanent conservation easement on the property, so no development. That saves anywhere from 350 to 450 new homes, and all those homes would be part of Huber Heights but go to Bethel local schools. So we're thrilled with that for the school, but we're also thrilled with the green space. And Bethel Township contributed 25% to the purchase price. It's going to be about $810,000 to $850,000. We're not quite sure yet. It hasn't closed yet. That'll happen the end of October, and that's a lot of money. 75% came from a grant from the Ohio Public Works, and it's huge. I mean, it's a huge win for the township and a huge win for the school, and it gives green space to our township, keeps it open. So yes, thanks. Good point. Yes, and money for that came from the 3.8 mil levy.
Dawn, can you come up to the camera for a minute? Yeah, you. I just... I have a big thank you to say to this guy, because I don't know how many of you know, but he did a lot of the early site work here for our new school and stadium, and he's also potentially going to do a road for us that connects the back parking lot to the stadium, so I would like to give you a round of applause.
Wow, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you both very much. Appreciate it. Anything?
I will say one other thing.
Yeah.
Just because I was going to talk about the Siler property just a little bit. That's not exactly straight across the road from my house, but that's okay, because I have broad shoulders and thick skin. It is on Singer Road, and I live on Singer Road, but I remember that property from being a kid. They purchased that in like 1948, and the grandparents lived there. The son then inherited it. He'd never done anything with it. The grandson never done anything with it. And now the grandson's selling it and getting all the money out of it, but part of that, besides the 800 and some thousand the township's paying for, I'm going to tear down all of those buildings and do all of the restoration work for them, and I do not get any compensation for that, so thank you.
And Dawn, can you tell us what organization you use to do that? You're head of?
I've been the head of the Operating Engineers Training Program. I'm the statewide director, so I have an office in Columbus, and... But my closest office is down in Miami'sburg, West Carrollton, and we are a union program. We train for approximately 1,000 contractors here in the state of Ohio. I have 45 guys that work for me doing the training. I've been there 32 years doing that, but we try to give back to communities, whether it be a school, whether it be a church, whether it be a ball league, a park, whatever, and our students get some training, some real-life training, but we always feel like we need to give back to the community just a little bit. The other kind of neat thing about our program, we take zero handouts or government money. We're funded 100% by our members, so we will never take a grant from the state, from the federal, from a county, or anything. Our philosophy is, is if we can't afford it, we'll do without it, and we pay cash. So it's a little bit different. We're sort of like the old-time people, so I fit right in, being so old. I fit right in at that, but thank you for giving us the opportunity.
Thank you for what you're doing, genuinely. It's a pretty amazing thing. Additional things? Mrs. Reese?
So I just wanted to mention the new parallel annexation for anybody that doesn't know. Hopefully, everybody knows, but we have stopped that temporarily. There was kind of a grassroots movement, and a lot of people went up and opposed it. It went on for 205 days, so Natalie kind of represented you guys on the board, and so they did not vote on annexation per se, but they have voted not to accept the current development plan, which will at least stall it for some time, so good news for the school. It was down to 250 houses from 300 roughly, so that was some good news already, but you know, that's more kids, that at least it has been delayed, and hopefully we can do some things in the meantime to stop that from coming back. But if there's any questions on that?
Also excellent news. You guys are just full of good news. You should come every month if you got this kind of good news every month. It's amazing. Love it. Anything for the township from members of the board? Anything we'd like to share? Mr. Crispin, anything you have to share with the township? I know you've been to a couple of... At least one of their meetings, and I think you're going again.
I haven't been to a meeting tomorrow night.
Okay.
Yeah.
I saw it on your calendar, I think, so, okay. I think you guys had some questions for us about growth, but I think, like I said, Mr. Crispin's been talking about our numbers like every week in his newsletters and releases and things like that, so... And again, you guys just spoke about the annexation not going through at this time, so that's great. School's going through. Fifth grade wing is almost there, so that's great. I don't know if there's anything else you guys needed to know from us or need from us at this time? Anytime, absolutely. I know we've talked about doing it twice a year, and I think that we're just about on schedule for that, give or take. Pretty close? Yeah. So nothing further than the word? Okay. Thank you so much for being here, and thank you for being so accommodating. I know we had talked about coming to you, and here you are back with us again, so thank you so much. It's much appreciated. Very much appreciated. Thank you. Okay, then moving to item B, our English Language Learners presentation with Erin Bailey, our coordinator. Thank you for being here, Ms. Bailey?
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Mr. Crispin had asked if I'd be interested in coming and sharing just kind of a brief overview of where we're at and where we have... How we've kind of grown, I guess, in the last few months, so just a brief snapshot of where we're at. Go to the next one. Okay, so I like looking at numbers and data and everything, so just like six months ago, April 2022, we had 215 ELL students in our program, K through 12. Two of them were newcomers, and when I say newcomers, those are students who have recently immigrated from other countries, who have been in the U.S. education system for less than two years. So we only had two at that time. In May, after we had our results from the OALPA back, which is our like state test for English proficiency, we were down to 181 students in our program that we would have been starting out the year with, not taking into account new kindergarten students, students transferring from other districts, those kinds of things. So now, currently, we are at 310 ELL students in the district, and 77 of those are newcomers, so students who have... Most of them have come from Russia or Ukraine, and while we are so excited to have them be a part of our community, there are very unique differences between somebody who comes in not speaking any English versus students who have been here for several years, and you know, it's like two complete different programs almost. So I definitely wanted to highlight those newcomer numbers. You can go ahead. So this is a breakdown by grade level, and our young fives is new this year, of course, but they make up 46% of the young fives, which I think is going to be very beneficial for those ELL students to have that second year of, you know, kindergarten essentially. So kindergarten is at 31% of the entire grade level are ELL students. I was looking to, like, if you would combine the numbers of like young fives and kindergarten and do all the math, you're at about 34% of those incoming students are ELL students. So if you think of that, like a third of our population coming in are English language learners, and then as they start to go through the different grade levels, you'll see that the percentages get smaller. And the reason is that we have, you know, through our state tests that they take, the OALPA, our goal is for them to exit the program. We want them to be able to be successful in the classroom without those extra supports. So you'll see that, you know, like in the high school, 11th to 12th grade, only 6%. So when we look at like the whole percentage of the district, you know, and you see like, oh, like, it doesn't look like we have that many ELL students. That's why, is because the numbers start to decrease. However, I will say, I like to think of the perspective of if a third of our kindergarteners are ELL students, those are still the same students that are carried on through each grade level. Even if they exit the program, we monitor them for two years, which that's not included in any of those numbers, and they're, you know, just a different dynamic for the teachers, because even when they exit, like, there's still sometimes grammar, vocabulary, things like that, where there could be holes. So go ahead and go to the next one. This is last year's data, and I just kind of did this so that then on the following slide, I could compare the percentages. Something I haven't ever done before, but again, this was actually just like towards the end of last year, so I don't have the numbers looking at like the beginning of last year to the beginning of this year, because there are students that move in throughout the year. If you go ahead and go to the next one, I think that will be helpful to see the comparison between April 22 to currently. Again, I combined our current numbers for five... Young fives and Ks for this data, so all but two grade levels have increased the percentage, and I was like, man, how did those two go down? But I think one thing is just depending on grade level, how many students, you know, you typically have, and that our district as a whole is growing, not just our ELL community, so, you know, so if there was a large amount of numbers in a specific grade level that came in, that plays into it, you know, how many of them tested out on a particular grade level as well. So, um... So yes, we are growing considerably, and you can go ahead and go to the next one. I'm going to take too much of your time, but if we look at kind of where we were staff-wise back in April, when we had 215 ELL students, only two of those newcomers. We had one middle school, high school, ELL teacher, two and a half elementary ELL teachers, and then a ELL coordinator through the ESC, who was here with us for two days a week. So it's approximately 60 ELL students per teacher, per ELL teacher. Now, kind of what we've been operating on the last couple of months, and we'll get to kind of some good news here in a minute, but what we've been operating on, we have not filled that middle school, high school, ELL teaching position, unfortunately. Mr. Triplet, before he left, had set up a couple interviews, and it fell through, and we just haven't been able to fill that. We still have our two and a half ELL teachers in the... I didn't specifically put elementary, because we've been filling in different roles for the middle school and high school as well, with all the screening of the new students and just kind of setting them up for success and all their language plans, those kinds of things. I'm filling in the role of the... Or should I say filling in? I'm the coordinator, but I'm doing that supposed to be just one day a week. I can tell you that that has taken a wild, crazy turn, and definitely is more than, you know, one day a week worth of work and that. And then we also have our ESC support that she comes in with us for a day and a half to two days. So we have been operating so far this school year with over 100 students per teacher on our caseload, and a couple years ago, Larry Claypool and Tony Cochran did some kind of research and stuff just to see, like, is there a set number of students that you should have? And the state honestly doesn't give like any parameters on that. It's a little different than in the world of, you know, intervention specialist and things like that, but they found that about 45 to 50 students was the recommended number. So go on to the next one. The part in the white is what we have currently been operating with. The yellow are the things that we are adding, and some of those that we'll see later on this evening, hopefully. But one of those things is since we haven't been able to fill that middle school, high school teaching position, we are looking to hire, or hopefully she'll be starting next week, a long-term sub that will be with us. And then we also have one that is filling in two days a week, that is working with some of our high schoolers in fifth grade, and then we also have a new position that I've been interviewing candidates for, and this is called a ELL Support Specialist. These are people who are, we said, you know, bilingual required, but these are like multilingual people who will be so beneficial for our students and for our staff. We have three that we're hiring that are each going to be working 20 hours a week, going into the classroom, helping the teachers kind of navigate stuff, helping the students who, you know, are very, very limited in their English, and so, yeah, it's just, it's going to be also great just for our ELL students to see that represented in our staff, that we have staff members who are Turkish or Russian. Even with these things, I mean, of course, those don't take place of the ELL teaching, you know, they're still... The students are still pulled out to come with us, and we're responsible for teaching them English, so even with all of these things, it puts us at about 70 to 80 students per teacher, per ELL teacher. Okay? Couple other things that we have put in place, so for these newcomers, these students who are coming to us, just literally like two months ago, they came to the U.S., a lot of them from Russia and Ukraine. You know, if you think about how they would do their classwork, you know, it's very likely that they'd have 20%, 30%, you know, just very, very low grades, and how demoralizing that that would be when, you know, these people, these students are very intelligent, it's just that there's that language barrier. And so we have looked at what other districts have done also in these situations for newcomers, and created a pass/fail system for grades six through 12, as well as for K through five, we're calling it Needs Improvement or Progressing. So there's certain guidelines that we've given the teachers for this. I mean, it's not just, you know, like, oh, everybody gets a pass. We want to make sure that they are making progress, that they're putting forth effort, initiative, their attendance, all of those kinds of things. So hopefully that will be a beneficial thing for our district to have for them, and that will be if they are able to get grades before that two years is up, you know, if they're being successful and making a lot of progress, then we can do that. Otherwise, that can be up to two years. And then additional resources for our newcomer students, we've been able to purchase some word-to-word or bilingual dictionaries that have, you know, just straight English word to the Russian word, or Russian word to English and back and forth. They can use those in classes, they can use them on state test. Also, our ELL department, like I said, it's almost like a separate set of needs and a different population with having these newcomers. So we've been able to purchase some teaching materials that we can use for all, you know, grade levels, elementary, middle school, high school, and things that we can use year after year, that we're not, you know, just going to have to get them every year. For the staff, we were able to provide some professional development before the school year started, but now that we're in the, you know, in the trenches of it, really, we're finding that the teachers are... we're finding that the teachers are needing more. And so we've been trying to go to, um, some of the staff meetings or grade level meetings to help support teachers, as well as in the October twenty-first PD, we're going to be providing some other professional development. So that's all I have to share. Um, I didn't know if we, I didn't put a slide on there for questions because I wasn't sure, you know, time-wise and things, but I'm always open for conversations or, um, you know, you can email me and call me at any time.
Questions from the board? Mr. King?
I have a question.
Sure.
Ms. Bailey, what, what can we do as a board to support you and your program outside of the hiring of people and going through all those processes?
Sure.
But are there any barriers, policy, procedures, scheduling, any tools that are needed that potentially could assist?
Um, I think one obstacle with high school is looking at graduation requirements. I don't know exactly what, you know, the board, um, can do as far as that, but that's something that we're really looking at. You know, these students who are coming in, um, you know, at the high school level, it presents challenges for the students in, you know, our district too, with them graduating. Um, yeah, I mean, I'm sure there's, there's other big, you know, like programs and stuff. We have tried to get as many free resources as we can, like in the teachers, you know, the classrooms and stuff, so that when the students are, you know, not able to do some of the other things that they're able to get on a program. Um, and so, yeah, we're looking at a couple of other things that we can get for them as well.
So that was pretty much an open-ended question as well. All right, so, um, please keep us informed through, um, the superintendent of those items that you're needed.
Okay.
Just so there's areas where we can assist in reducing or assisting in educating in a very difficult environment.
Mm-hmm.
So thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Absolutely, and, and looking at the agenda for, um, the conference we're about to go to, I would imagine this might be a hot topic for some of our vendors and, and other conference attendees as well. So we'll look around for things we can find there that might be able to help too.
Yeah, and I'd just like to say thank you and your staff and the teachers for all their work.
Yeah.
Because I know it was an added unexpected burden. And, um, at least I have been doing some little, a little research behind the scenes on funding and I know I passed, I think through Mr. Crispin, a grant opportunity possibly. I don't know if you've had the time to explore that, so I'll keep checking, but we kind of found out the funding went from the federal government to the state, and then the state gives it to Ohio Job and Family Services and hopefully eventually we will see some funding. We'll see, so we're still, at least I think we're still doing some research on that and seeing how it all goes. So we're trying.
Yeah. But deepest gratitude sincerely for everything you're doing. We know it's a hard year. Thank you so much. Anything further from the board on this topic? No? Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Okay, moving back to our agenda, we're moving on to public participation. So again, welcome to our visitors who are here this evening. We have, I believe, one slip for agenda items this evening. So, and I think that's Mrs. Reese.
Ah, yes ma'am, just some questions, uh, maybe you can fill them in as you go, like you usually do. Uh, one is in the certified section. There seems to be a lot of long-term subs. Typically, this is medical leave of, of absence that we replace, and some of them were two days a week. If you could just talk a little bit about why those are there and has something changed or just to meet the needs? The other is business and the contracted services. This was not in the work session, so first time talking about, I think it was a Spanish curriculum contractor. Is this full-time? There was a nice job description for head cook, but it didn't have any explanation about what this position was, so if you could just talk about that a little bit. In the business section, the certificate of availability, I was wondering if the GFS and Sidney Electric were coming out of the kitchen fund? And, um, can you publish the ELL presentation? It was not attached to the board docs. And then also, um, I like the discussion session, section. It changed a little bit from the work session, but, um, I like the topics.
Thank you. Actually, we just added the ELL presentation just this evening because I didn't want to have to flip between email and whatever else, and it was obviously going to be made public at some point anyway, so it's out there now. Um, so that one, we can check that off the list now. Well, that's good. And...
Oh, that's one.
No, 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 you're, you're totally good. You're totally good. It was, it was in my email for sure and I was like, we'll just put it on the agenda and it's good, so that's covered. And then we'll, we'll hit the other items, as you said, as we go. I'm sure that'll all come clear as we go. Okay, and that was the only one, right, Mrs. Higman?
I think so, yes.
Okay, for agenda. Perfect. Well, I will hand this over to you. And then I'm going to hand something else to you too, because it's item five, treasurer's report. Mrs. Higman?
Thank you. Okay, so we have, um, the monthly financial report. I am a month behind and I apologize. We have the August report for there, uh, there available for everyone, the monthly financial report, um, as well as the investment report and our cash balances as of September. Now, the September balances may change, but I think we're okay. Um, let's go back to the monthly report if you would. Yeah. Um, just sort of wanted to touch base on some of the items. This is our bank reconciliation. We did have a miscellaneous of forty-four cents, but I will find it. Um, but I just didn't want to spend any more of the district's time looking for forty-four cents, but we are going to find it. Um, but the next, um, slide is, um, our actual cash flow and where we're at for the current, uh, for August. And then if we go to the next slide, what I did is I'm comparing our actual budget for the whole fiscal year to the first two months of the fiscal year that we're currently at. So what I do is I try to benchmark where I think we should be and what we should spend. Um, and so we have our target at twenty-eight point nine eight for all our revenues and we've come in at twenty-eight point six one. So we're running just a little low in the revenue department, which isn't too big a cause for pause, but one of the things that did concern me is the area in which that revenue is low, and that is in the TIF revenue. I was expecting one and a half million. We got one point three million and some change. So that's something I'm going to have to keep an eye on as we move forward. On expenses, we are looking at some pretty, um, increased expenses, especially in the month of August because we had a huge influx of students, so we had, um, some supplies and materials that were unexpected in the month of August. But we're going to, I'm going to keep a close eye on that and see where we come out, um, as we work forward. As you know, November is the month that we have to do our financial forecast, five-year forecast, so I'm going to be keeping an eye on all of those areas and what we need to do to move forward. So if you want to just scroll to the, the pretty charts, that's probably the best thing, right? And the financial summary for anybody that wants to read through why I think there are variances and what those variances are for, so, um, what causes those. These, um, charts are just showing where the money comes from and where the money goes, because everybody always asks where does our money come from and where it goes, so, um, and where those percentages are. So out of the total revenues of four million, nine hundred and sixty-one thousand that we've received in the two months of this fiscal year, um, thirty-one percent of that is real estate taxes, sixteen percent is income taxes and so on and so forth. So, and, um, so twenty-eight ninety-eight is my, percent is my benchmark, what I was expecting, and we're at twenty-eight sixty. So then where does money go? Forty-four percent of our, um, reven, our spending goes to salaries and seventeen percent goes to fringe benefits. So, and that's pretty, well, actually, we're running lower than most districts in that area, but that are your two largest areas of spending in any school district. So, um, if we go to the next chart, that shows where, um, my benchmark was nineteen point eight six and as far as spending, we're at twenty point two eight. So that's not the direction I want to be at, but we're certainly going to take a look and make sure we're doing okay. And anyone that has any questions about the monthly financial report, please feel free to give me a call or send me an email. Investments have, it's been pretty exciting, um, as of late, as everybody has heard, feds have jumped rates up and down, up and down. We have about eight million dollars, almost ten, that are sitting liquid in a money market account for two reasons. One, we're, we're building, so we need that money to pay for the construction. And two, I was trying to see where, um, we could invest that money and get the biggest, you know, return that we possibly can short-term. So we're going to be investing six point two million in various areas. So next month, you're going to see, um, some increase there, less money in the money market. Um, but it's been, it's been a little, you know, we're, as rates go up, it's good to invest, but considering we're looking at short-term because we want to open our doors in September, we've got to be very careful about making sure we don't tie up too much of our cash, so. Oh, yes, we have the cash summary. Um, that just shows all of our various accounts, um, and what our current fund balance is. That's your cash on hand. Um, so if you have any questions about any of those funds, please feel free to give me a call. Um, but those are all the miscellaneous funds that the district has and that we manage. So currently, um, our total fund balance is twenty-seven million, three fifty-two, two thirty-nine, seventy-eight, but that's for the month of September. We had a little bit of a snack food with our books, but we're working on that with our ASYIT and I'm hoping to have that fixed tomorrow. So we will get everything out as soon as we can. Then the next item is payment of bills. That's our detailed check register, anybody that likes to look at that. Um, most of that's going to be payroll. I think it's middle of page thirteen where you actually start to see accounts payable checks, but the rest of, um, the items are payroll items, so it's either third, oh, did I miss it? It's more. Okay, so, um, those are also uploaded, uploaded to the checkbook site, um, once the board approves it, so they're available there as well. I do not have an amended certificate because we're working on getting the books fixed for September, get them, getting them done. Um, and then that's all I have.
We need a motion to approve the consent agenda for the treasurer's report, um, without item C, because there is no item C. So for just items A and B, is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. King. Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Elam for the second. Thank you very much. Is there discussion?
I'd just like to say thank you to Tina for working her way through the investments. I know we had some bonds that were set up for some reason not to be due till 2024, so she's gotten all that stuff, um, fixed, for lack of a better term, and I know that took a lot of time and energy and effort, and thank you for reinvesting and hopefully we'll see some interest, uh, moving forward.
Further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Please call the vote when you're ready, Ms. Higman.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. Sebastian?
Yes.
Mr. Elam?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Thank you. Approved with a four oh vote. Thank you very much. Moving on to number six, the superintendent's report. Turning it over to you, Mr. Crispin.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, board members, and, uh, welcome guests. Um, let's go right to item A, if we could bring up the BL, the other one, if you could, please. So, uh, we're going to start with meat and potatoes. Uh, we educate kids and once a year we get tested and, um, like it or not, we get compared, um, to districts statewide and ranked and all those types of things, but right now we're looking at, um, uh, our own scores. And, uh, this particular document, um, which we'll make available on the website as well, um, takes a look at how we've performed over the last six years on the Ohio State tests. And, uh, I think during that time, the, uh, uh, standard for, uh, districts as far as passage rate was seventy percent, and now it's eighty percent, and now they're getting rid of that. So, um, but, uh, anyway, so that's, um, so, you know, these are the twenty, uh, used to be twenty-one tested areas by grade, uh, English math, English math, uh, up until we get into fifth grade, then we throw in science. Um, we have science then again in sixth grade and then we get into, uh, as, or eighth grade, I'm sorry, and then, um, then the high school and of course exams. And so even in just looking at ourselves, um, there's a lot there and you have to, to fly at a high elevation, um, especially when you ha, run into a pandemic and you don't have testing and you have remote learning and, um, uh, all kinds of, uh, strange things going on. Um, I think one of the first things that, um, jumps out as you look at this is, uh, learning losses really happened because of COVID. And, um, this district at some point, if you could scroll up, I know there's a lot to get on there. So, um, between twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen, um, you had a lot of, uh, movement as far as percentage rate. And so one of the questions I'm asked, going to be asking is, what, what was going on there? Because, um, we saw improvement in, um, sixteen of the twenty-one tested areas, actually for two, two years straight, twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, where we're really bu, building up some momentum. And then that darn C-word, COVID, right? And, um, and then last, last spring, we got to look at, or spring prior, twenty twenty-one, we got to look at, uh, where our kids were at. And you could see, um, we definitely lost ground wi, with our, our children. Um, so this year, again, first thing I look at is how many tested areas did we improve? Just straight across the board. And twenty twenty-two, um, those, those areas are, are marked in green in the plus-minus column. Um, we got better in nine of the twenty tested areas. Our best, again, was back in seventeen and eighteen where we improved, uh, in, in sixteen of those tested areas. Um, and then also, I was just kind of curious, look at the six-year average, see where we're at as far as that seventy, eighty percent. Uh, I could probably throw up the state average and Bethel usually tests above the state average, um, or their proficiency rate is above the state average, which is, we're an above-average school district and that's where we want to be and remain. Um, so if we could, look, let's look at eighth grade math, because that helps, that, that was one that jumped out, because if you look at eighth grade math, um, in twenty sixteen, we, only twenty-nine point four percent of our students tested proficient or above. Um, and we got better at fifty-two point six, the next year, twenty eighteen, fifty-five point six, sixty-one percent, seventy-one percent in, uh, that would be twenty twenty-one. And then we, we hit the skids there in twenty twenty-two. And so this is, again, looking at the grade, just what's going on in that grade level, not with the cohort of kids. And if we could go to the cohort look, we'll have this out there as well. Um, so we look at, uh, where are we at? Let's find eighth grade. So our eighth grade, we remember, is at fifty-nine point eight percent, but that same group of kids, minus who moved in and out, it's relatively the same. If you go back a year, um, as seventh graders, they were at fifty, only fifty-one point three percent of them passed. So that, we like to see that growth as well, and you could argue that that's even, we should, that's really the number we should look at, is how many more kids we got over the bar, if you will. And so while on one chart, that fifty-nine point, uh, uh, eight percent looks like a dip for that group of kids, that was actually, we got more kids over the bar and that, that, that's a good thing. So, um, certainly when we look at both of these charts, um, uh, what, what sticks out is what's, what's happening with our transition to middle school. And I think that's an area that we're going to have to, to look at. Um, and, uh, you know, that middle child kind of gets lost sometimes and, uh, I was one of them. And, um, you know, that, that's certainly something that, that sticks out. We, we seem to have some momentum coming out of the elementary and then this middle school gears, um, can be difficult. school gears can be difficult, and so, that's, that's something we definitely want to take a look at. So, that is a look at our OST scores, and kind of what we are just at the start of talking about and looking at. I've asked the, the principals to, as we've encountered some issues with ordering books with the new students, and had numbers crossed and books stashed places we didn't know, we are doing a district-wide book inventory, and we're also going to look at, you know, the age of our books, the rotation of curriculum, or textbook adoption, as well as curriculum apps and those types of things, and just kind of get a sense where we are at as far as our materials, if they're aligned with our current standards, and are we giving the kids the daily instruction towards those standards, what they're going to be tested on daily. And so, when we have that finished, we will, we'll definitely share that with the board. Questions about state test results and data? Meat and potatoes, right?
I kind of feel like I live this every day already, so.
Yeah.
I'm good. Anybody else? Questions from the board? Thanks.
Okay. Then we updated our enrollment chart, and we will do that monthly for the public. We'll put that out there at the end of every month, and again, we're still holding pretty, that elementary went through, is going through some great growth, one hundred and nineteen new students still, and sure sounds like it outside our door, doesn't it, Tina? Yeah, it's loud. But anyways, just a good, just you get a good feel with, for what our, our staff is up against, and as well as our administration. It's a crowded place at BLS. On to construction projects. Everything's going great. The principals, Mr. Byrd and myself, sat down with the large floor plan and started plugging in where the grades go, where the folks go, where we do gifted services, EL services, those types of things, and good news is, everybody fits. Bad news is, we really need, we need to finish that second phase of the fifth grade wing so we can move in there. We think, as we've discovered more about partitions and the cost and where we're at in the project, we're going to have to figure out how we can use those larger rooms of, that fit forty-nine students that are located in each wing, but we can, we can manage that. We just need to get everybody over there in September. As we held that meeting, we had, things would pop up. Oh, don't forget, we need to do this, and what about movers and boxers, and are we going to give, you know, teachers time to box things up, and what's, what's going to go over, what's not, those types of things. So, we're thinking about a transition team with administration, teachers, and, and to start attacking that list. We actually already have, I've asked Mr. Byrd to start inventorying furniture again, and to also consider that some of those rooms will be taken over by the middle school as they, you know, stretch out, and we work on making those class sizes smaller next year. And so, we need to get an idea now, especially with supply chain issues with school furniture, on what, what our needs are going to be, or at least ballpark it in the event that we need to order some stuff. So, in addition to the transition team, we thought it'd be a neat thing to provide hope for our elementary folks and do some site visits on a nice October day, and we'll keep the board apprised of that in case you want to join us. Again, the, the building is on schedule, knock on wood. We haven't had to dip too much into our contingency funds, which is a great thing. Just, we hope that continues to hold true. The track and the field excavation continues. We have gravel where the asphalt's going to go for the track. We have fence post sleeves put in, and that part of the project's really happening, so that's exciting for Bethel Township. That's what I have for construction project updates. Onto upcoming events.
If I may, just for a second.
Yep.
I just want to apologize, I can't open the pictures. This is a loner laptop. Yeah, it, yeah, and it's not letting me open it as a picture, and so, I apologize. This is not my normal laptop, so apologies for, to everyone there, but we'll get those pictures out on the website in the, under the construction update. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your patience.
So, upcoming events, Wednesday, October nineteenth, we have Choir Palooza at Bethel Hall, six to nine P M. Thursday, October twentieth, just a reminder, we have a two-hour early dismissal, and that is also the end of the first grading period. Then Friday is, no classes for students, but we do have Teacher In-Service Day. The following Monday, then, the twenty-fourth, the second grading period begins, and we have some ELA testing that takes place those next two days. And then, our Fall Festival and Pumpkin Auction. Yours truly is going to be the auctioneer. Yes, I know the auctioneer song, but I sing it at very slow speed. You know the auctioneer song? Okay. So, those are upcoming events. And then, last, Section D, I just wanted to mention that we did submit an application for security grant, max is, max amount is a hundred thousand dollars, and that will be mostly what we need to replace our aging surveillance camera system, replace cameras, as well as help with the replacement of our phone system. Actually, we may have to buy the phones sooner, so looking for, looking for that money tree, because it's, it's limping along. That's it for tonight's superintendent report.
Thank you, Mr. Crispin. All right. Moving on to item seven, recommendations for classified personnel. I believe this is you, too.
Yes, ma'am. So, item A, employ classified staff. Kim DeCarlo is a lunch aide, and then we have, these are folks that we've talked about at the work session. We have, and Erin mentioned this evening, our three EL support specialists that are multilingual, and looking forward to having them help us out in the classrooms. And then, new, and I believe she's here this evening, Danielle Durham, I'm recommending to be our head cook. Danielle is transformed over the last two months, and has really stepped up and helped lead the efforts in, in the kitchen, and I look forward to working with her, and I know her partner at the EPC is as well. So, we have Danielle there as the head cook, and then Catherine Mater, this is special education aide, are my recommendations for hire. Resignations, along with the two from our original agenda, we have Ron Ritchie, bus driver, Brian Vest, these are all switched assignments. Brian Vest, our boys freshman basketball coach, Josh Anderson, girls junior high basketball coach, and Autumn Johnson, girls junior varsity basketball coach, and you'll see all their names come up in this next section under supplemental volunteers. And there they are. No additions, same bunch as last week. And then, our new classified salary schedule, also, we made no changes to that from the work session. And so, that was getting rid of the ten-month secretary position, the addition of the head cook manager position, and the healthcare clinician addition. Yeah?
Correct. We didn't get rid of the ten-month secretary position. We still have ten-month secretaries, we just moved them all into one.
Into one.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you for fixing my English.
I don't want them to think that they don't have jobs. They do. So, we just moved it into one salary line.
Those are my classified personnel recommendations for tonight.
Okay, thank you. So, I need a motion for approving the consent agenda for classified personnel?
I'll move.
Thank you, Mrs. Sebastian. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. King. Is there discussion?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Crispin for all his work interviewing people, and especially for Danielle for stepping forward. I know that's been a position we've been looking for, for quite some time, and I want to go back to the grants and funding and say thank you again to Mr. Crispin and Mrs. Hageman for working on this security grant, and then, the ODE grant you submitted. I, I can't imagine the amount of time and calls and efforts that you went into those, but I do really appreciate all your work and effort.
Further comments or questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. Mrs. Hageman, will we please call the roll?
Mrs. Sebastian?
Yes.
Mr. Elam?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes. Approved with a four oh vote. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to recommendations for certified personnel. Back to you, Mr. Crispin.
Thank you. Item A, we have the retirement, Mike Tase, our art teacher. The long-term subs, just to go over those again, if you remember, we lost our CCP, college credit plus Spanish teacher, Mandy Schmuel, she's over in Spain. As you can imagine, we searched high and low, including going to Edison State and looking for a replacement teacher to teach those courses so our kids can get college credit. Finding none, we did find somebody that was willing to take on the long-term sub position, and then, the recommendation in the business section for consulting services, curriculum services, is we're going to enlist Mandy's help in providing curriculum for that long-term sub, but that's, that's Sephora. And then, Heather Richardson, as Erin showed us earlier, we've, we've had the posting for the middle school EL position for several months, finding none. We're, we're putting a sub in there that has some background that we believe will help us. And then, the same with the elementary position. So, those are the long-term, again, usually, that's, those are reserved for medical situations, but we've had some unique things happen here, not only the growth, but, you know, last month, we had the kindergarten teacher that ended up moving with the spouse, and that just generally, those things just don't happen all the time. So, we have our ESC substitute teacher lists, no change there. We have a few more additions under Section D for salary changes, and then, leave without pay, again, for medical reasons, for Erin Kahler. And then, we have Brian Mullin is going to take over as math club advisor, and those are my recommendations for certified personnel for October.
Thank you, Mr. Crispin, and thank you for the added explanation as well for some of those items. Need an approval, or a motion for approval of the consent agenda for certified personnel?
I'll move.
That you, Mr. Elam?
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Elam, and thank you, Mr. King, for the second. Discussion, please.
I'd like to congratulate Mr. Tase on his retirement. He's done a real nice job here for a number of years. He was a high school classmate of mine, and he's done, he's done a very nice job, so I want to congratulate him.
Yep. I know my son always enjoyed his classes very much. Further discussion, comments, concerns? Thank you for doing what you can to replace the CCP Spanish. I know it's a tough one, that's a rare bird.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And to do what you can to fill those classrooms, I know that those students need stability more than anything else, and having a different sub every day is just not really acceptable, so I appreciate that very much. I know if I was getting hit by a bus, it'd be pretty tough to find somebody to do what I do, so that's, that's tough. I mean, we all feel like we're special, right? But, you know, some classes are just definitely harder to fill than others, so. Okay. Further, further discussion, further comments?
Well, and thanks for your solutions for the ELL. I mean, I, I think most people in this room know by now, but we've had an ELL high school, middle school position posted since June, so it's just like everywhere else, employee, employee shortages, so thank you for finding a solution that works, or for finding a solution that works, Erin. Thank you.
Erin comes into my office, is panicked, and it's like, ah, what are we going to do? And just thinking outside the box, but can't say enough about her efforts, and we're also, this is coming, this is new news, but we're going to employ her for additional days. She is hired, employed by the ESC, and so, we're going to ask for extra days for her just to get it all done, and so she doesn't get any more gray hair, and she's working her tail off, and we really appreciate it.
Yeah.
Yep.
I feel like if I had her caseload and everyone's caseload that they have, I'd be pretty much in a panic as well, so.
Yep.
Yeah, absolutely. Agreed and understood. Okay. Anything further from my compatriots? Okay. Hearing none. Mrs. Hageman, please call the vote.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. Sebastian?
Yes.
Mr. Elam?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Okay. Certified Personnel Agenda passes with a four oh vote. Okay, recommendations for business. Back to you again, Mr. Crispin.
Sure. Item A is our service agreement with the Montgomery County Educational Service Center for hearing and audiology services. Item B is superintendent search. Do you want to comment?
I do, actually. So, as many of you in the community, as well as people up here, know, Bethel local schools is searching for a new superintendent. We have contracted with K-12 Consulting to assist with this process, as Mr. Crispin is an interim. So, on October twenty-fourth, K-12 consultants will meet with community members in a forum to determine three things. They want to know what is great about Bethel local schools, what issues are facing Bethel local schools, and what characteristics would you like to see in the next superintendent? These sessions, it's going to be, the session is going to be facilitated by K-12 consultants who will provide a report after the sessions, and the sessions are confidential, and all comments will be reported, will have no identifying names or groups, so please try to attend. Again, that's October twenty-fourth at six thirty P M. here in Bethel Hall, and if you cannot attend, please go to our website, which is bethelk12.org, and if you go to the menu and scroll down, there is an area specifically a page for superintendent search, and you can go to the superintendent search questionnaire area, and it will pull up a Google form where you're able to select what part of the community you represent. It does not share your email address or any of that, and you can answer those kinds of questions, prioritize of the ten categories, what you think highest priority to lowest priority, and submit some feedback to the consultants. It asks about the two or three most significant strengths in the district, most prominent issues facing the district, and two or three characteristics, characteristics you think the board should look for in a new superintendent. So, if you're unable to attend the session, please go online and complete that form for them. They would very much appreciate that, as would we, so that it'll help us with our profile that they're creating to search for the new superintendent, so that we can get a candidate that meets everyone's needs as, as well as we possibly can. No one wants to try and handle that without feedback and without as much information as possible. Further comments and concerns from the board? Further comments and concerns from the board?
The one that I have is, on that form you just put up there for that survey, do we even receive that form?
We do not see the Google form at all, no. It goes straight to K-12.
Straight to K-12?
Yep, straight to K-12.
So we don't see anything?
Correct.
They'll just give us a synopsis?
Right.
A synopsis of what everybody is looking for?
We get a summary. If there's unique comments or something they think we need to know and hear, they'll point those out to us. But otherwise, we just get, you know, sort of the overall rankings from 1 to 10, where they think the highs and the lows are, and then just general feedback comments.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. That's a good point. Thank you, Mr. King. Other comments from the board about this search? Before we hand it back over? Okay. Back to you, Mr. Crispin.
Thank you. Item C is a memorandum of understanding with our teachers' union, bringing some conformity to when supplemental contracts are paid out. And then item D, Miss Hagaman.
As I explained during our work session, we have three certificates of availability, which just means that the POs are dated after the invoices, so I just need your consent to say that, yes, the money was available, so we can go ahead and get those paid. So Gordon Food Service and Sidney Electric Company were both for the food service department, so yes, they will be paid out of the 006 or the food service account. If you would click on maybe, yeah, one of those, I think I attached the purchase order. If you scroll down to the bottom, you can see that the account being paid from is 0063120, if I'm seeing it correctly. So to answer the question from the audience earlier from Mrs. Reese, those are paid from the food service department because it is expenses directly related to the operations of that department. So just need your approval to pay those.
Item E, we have two donations. Again, those were, no changes there from last week. This is, F is the contracted services contract with Mandy Schmeele. And again, we, obviously, we couldn't find a replacement teacher. Could have looked at online seat licenses. That's probably where we would have had to go if we didn't have this option. Those can be fairly expensive, especially if you're issuing college credit. I just think for the continuity of our program and for our kids, it's best to get a live person that's been an experienced sub linked with the person that has left us. I think she's hoping to come back. We'll see. Spain's a nice place, I hear. And, but anyways, and for the price to get curriculum, she's going to do some of the key summative assessments to make sure our kids are still hitting that quality that we've had here in the past in our CCP Spanish program. And so that's why I feel very comfortable in making this recommendation. And that's it for business recommendations this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Crispin. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda for business items?
I'll move.
Thank you, Mrs. Sebastian. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Elam. Is there discussion?
I would just highlight our donations and thank them for those donations through our athletic department.
Yes.
Some of those look to be pretty significant dollar amounts, and so thank you to those that donated.
Yes, $900 from Jim, is it Daybelt? Does anyone know this person? Is it Daybelt or DeBelt?
He's the, he's the girls' basketball reporter for the area.
Oh, that's right. You said that the last meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I have a very short memory this week, I'm sorry. And $250 from Don Williams for football donations, yeah. Okay. I don't think that the Miami County ESC service agreement is attached any longer, so just a records issue. I didn't see it earlier, and I know I'd read it before, so.
It's in the wrong spot.
Okay.
It's in under executive.
I knew I'd seen it before, so.
Sorry about that.
It's okay. I'd seen it, I'm not logged in now, so, because it's public view, so, there we go. That explains it. I knew I'd seen it before. Okay, there we go. Perfect, makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
In the wrong spot, cool. All right, anything further from other members? Okay, hearing none. When you're ready, Miss Hagaman, please call the vote.
Mrs. Sebastian?
Mrs. Sebastian?
Yes.
Mr. Elam?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes. Motion passes with a 4-0 vote for business items. Thank you. Okay, moving on to discussion. Ready for the BEA update? Is that going to be you tonight, Ms. Brewer? Welcome, welcome.
Is this still on?
Yes, 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 yes.
I do want to add, when we were talking about dates coming up, it wasn't on there. October 26th through the 28th is the eighth grade Williamsburg trip. I'm assuming most eighth graders will be attending October 26th through the 28th, Williamsburg. And if anyone has any questions, that Mr. Norman in the middle school will gladly answer those questions. On another note, I'm going to ask for a desperate plea. We need subs. Let me repeat myself. We need subs. We have teachers that are putting off going to the doctor because they don't want to have to have their colleagues cover their classes. And it being Breast Cancer Awareness Month, you got to do self-care. We need subs. How it works, if we do not have a sub in the middle school and the high school, a teacher is asked to give up their planned period. You know, we do it after five days in a row without a planned period. It gets hard to make phone calls, make copies, use the restroom. In the elementary, those classes are split, so a teacher that has already 20-odd kids now gets six more. And that keeps happening every day. So once again, we need subs, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brewer. Appreciate you. Okay. Technology Committee?
Yeah, so let me talk about the committees.
I like it.
As, you know, happens several times a day, I'm still learning about this district. You all had committees.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
We did.
And so I found that in the organizational meeting, and I scrapped what we had for the work session and plugged in those reports, because I think the things still fit. I know we probably won't have reports on the other things tonight, but I thought I'd bring those forward, say I found them, because I think we were trying to remember what we had previously. So anyways, that's where those came from.
So we're bringing it back?
If you like.
That's the plan.
This is just a little, you know.
Okay.
A little reminder.
It was great, especially when we're, you know, bringing in Google, when Google Classroom became a thing. That was when Technology Committee came in handy.
Gotcha.
I remember that. I don't think I've heard much from it in the time since, so that'd be about last I heard of it. So, you know, you know.
Good to know the history, I'm just learning.
That's all I really knew about it.
Yeah.
Cool, very good.
So I'll throw out there for Technology Committee, we did have discussion today at our core meeting about looking at finalizing the model we want to go with for the short throw projectors for the K-5 building, which is what the innovation team made up of our folks visiting other schools decided upon. So we are, we are working to finalize that piece.
Cool. Good. Other comments from the board about technology? Hearing none. Move on to Facilities Committee. Update on Facilities Committee, please. Is that you, Mrs. Sebastian? Or are you, Mr. Crispin? He's pointing at you.
Anything, I talked quite a bit about it, but.
I think if you want details on the Facilities Committee, you can probably go back and listen. I mean, the write-ups are up there, and Mr. Crispin read through them. Things are going well. And if you've driven past, they're bricking the front right now. It's kind of exciting, because I go that way a lot on my way to school, so I get excited when I see, you know, the roof, it's going to be under roof the beginning of December, completely roofed, and they were going to get windows in this week. They didn't talk about that at our core meeting, but they were supposed to start getting the windows in. And there's gravel on the track, so there is, Bethel will have a paved track here in another however many months, so it's kind of exciting to see.
I mean, I believe it's like a requirement for us to actually do an update, since it's a board committee, to actually update about what we spoke about in the meeting, so is, does anyone want to talk about, quick run-through of the agenda? And discuss what was discussed briefly, a summary?
Well, I'll do my best. Masonry bearing was completed in the middle of September. That's cinder block, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Masonry veneer installation brick is taking place in areas 6 through 9. Steel erection is occurring in the last area, number 9. That should wrap up in a week or two. Roof installation is going, is ongoing in area 6 and 7 and 9. Metal stud framing work is ongoing. Overhead mechanical and electrical work is ongoing. Stone has been placed and graded on the track. Fence posts around the outside of the track have been set, or is that just the sleeves for them?
Yeah.
Okay. Concrete sidewalks and curbs are scheduled to begin this week, along with drilling the foundations for the field lighting. The budget looks good. If I wrote this down correctly, there's about $1 million of contingency available, going to be available, still, which is, which is a great thing. $300,000 of contingency was released to complete Phase 1 of the fifth grade wing.
Any discussion about turf or any of that, or no?
The, the federal dollars were approved for the artificial turf, again, which the federal dollars are very limited in their scope and what they can be used for. That was also, part of that money was also earmarked for the short throw projectors, which took the short throw projectors off our PI, our PI spending, which we can now move to construction or finishing the fifth grade wing wherever it needs to go.
Thank you, Mr. Elam. Anything further from anyone else who was at the meeting?
I will, I will just add, for those that remember, we had talked late August about, you know, kind of what-ifs, if we could only afford this, what would we do in the fall? We'd kind of broken, broken out the field project into two phases, and now that that big chunk is taken care of, along with, we'd already purchased the bleachers, fencing, the cement pads, those types of things, we can now, the monies that we have left, the money, the great money that the boosters have raised, we can start really talking about those other pieces, the visitor bleachers, the fieldhouse, scoreboard, and the pathway to get from the lot, parking lot, to the field. So frees us up to do, finish it off, hopefully. Yeah, thanks.
And I'd just like to give a shout-out to the ODE for their very, very fast response. Application was submitted Friday. Mr. Crispin was notified Monday morning. We normally don't get that kind of response from government agencies, so we were pretty shocked. We were expecting a couple weeks. So thank you again, Tina and Matt, for all your work on that.
That was excellent. While we're on Facilities Committee, I believe there needs to be a membership change. Mrs. Franz is no longer on the board, and I haven't heard from her to say that she wants to remain on Facilities Committee, so at this time, it's just the president's responsibility to change those memberships, so I will, how do you even say that? I just moved that Jessica Franz no longer be a part of Facilities Committee. If she contacts me to say otherwise, we can always amend that at the time. So can you note that in the minutes for me, Mrs. Hagaman, please? Thank you, to make that official, because we never made it official before. Thank you. Yeah.
Speaking of Facilities Committees?
Yes.
And as we continue to move forward, are we still looking for community members to be a part of our Facilities Committee?
That is a fabulous question, Mr. King. I haven't heard from Mr. Runkel or Mr. Gilbert lately about their long-term intent, honestly. And I think it's probably always a great idea to hear from a variety of members in the community.
Mr. Gilbert was here at the last meeting, but I haven't seen Mr. Runkel in a while.
Sure, but for long-term, like what their intention is beyond the next, you know, several months, it'd be good to have a conversation with them to start as well, but absolutely. I mean, I think anyone who's interested should approach and let us know.
Yeah, I don't think there's a limit, but I think that's a great opportunity, though, for fellow community members to be engaged, at least at the foundational level of not only our current new school that's being built, as well as any new projects that will be going on in the school, to help guide us from the community's aspect.
Agreed. And probably about a year, year and a half ago, we had talked about having a finance committee, and we had requested applicants for that as well, so I'd like to see us institute that again. So there'll probably be additional opportunity for people to get involved, so with that committee, if we can start that up again, if we all decide to do that. So that is, like, stick a pin in that, but that'll probably come around again, so, yeah, absolutely, we're always looking for people who want to engage, for sure. That's an excellent point, thank you. Anything further on that particular committee from anyone? Anything to add that we didn't already talk about, that we talked about at the meeting, or that was talked about at the meeting? Okay. Okay, moving on then to liaison reports. So OSBA liaison, I think I need to appoint a new Miami Valley CTC liaison as well. Anyone interested in that particular position among our membership? I mean, I can do it, I suppose I can appoint myself. It's kind of weird, but I do have a kid there, so, okay, that's super weird, but I guess I'll do that, unless no one else is interested. I mean, I know Mrs. Donna Hughes is on, what is she? She's liaison for, does she want to? Let's, let's hold off. Let me ask, let me ask Mrs. Donna Hughes if she's interested first, and if not, I can... Did my microphone die? Did my microphone die? No, it didn't, okay. Let me ask Mrs. Donna Hughes first, and if she's not interested, then I'll do it. I don't want to step on toes, for sure. But at the moment, we don't currently have, because I think I needed to remove Mrs. Franz from Miami Valley CTC liaison too, but we'll put, we just won't do that now. We'll just do it when we replace. How's that? Yeah, that's fine. Any reports for OSBA liaison? Is that you? Or athletic liaison?
I'd just like to say thanks to the boosters for all their work with concession stand, and I know basketball season's coming up, and they can use workers. So thanks to the board for all their work.
That's a fact. Concession workers are always needed, for sure. That's true. Okay. If nothing further, then we'll move on to item 11, public participation. I think I have some slips here. Okay. Got your timer ready, Mr. Elam? Okay, just a reminder to direct your comments to me as the chair of the meeting, and not to people in the audience, please. And everybody does a good job of that, so we're good. Donna Hughes?
Is it on? I heard myself.
Yes, ma'am.
I need some, I need some clarification. One, for me to speak, I need to submit my name before the meeting starts. Is that correct?
That's generally the plan.
So anyone who submits a request after the meeting starts cannot speak?
It just says to, upon your arrival, is what it says. I don't know. Board, I look to you guys on this one. What's the, does the policy say it has to be before the meeting?
Stop my time while you're thinking, please. Stop my time.
Yes, ma'am. It's pretty small. It doesn't really spell it out, does it?
Ms. Mansfield, I believe in the past, it's been prior to the meeting starting, but there's been a long past practice of allowing people that arrived late or submitted late would be accepted.
Right.
I think to change that, we would have to put out notice to reinstitute that portion of the policy.
Right, I agree. So, I mean, in reading the policy, it says that you must register your intention to participate in the public portion of the meeting upon your arrival at the meeting. And I do agree, we've usually, you know, tried to have them collected at the start of the meeting. But I don't think we've ever denied anyone who turned their paper in when they came in the door, as long as they did it immediately when they arrived.
Okay, that's what I'm going to clarify. And Donna Beam, you can start my time. Donna Beam talked about the law last meeting. This meeting, I want to talk about the science and the money. I was told for two years to follow the science. Then I started following the money. Tonight, I will talk about, doesn't matter what your XX, XY, or what you chop off or what you add on, you will not change your internal person. Learn to love yourself before you make any questions. And let's see. I was wondering also a clarification. When Ms. Franz and Ms. Donahue was, signed them into the board meeting, was that at a regular board meeting?
When they were what? I'm sorry, ma'am.
When Ms. Franz and Ms. Donahue was inaugurated or accepted or signed in or whatever they call them.
When they took the oath of office, ma'am?
Yes, that's the word. Was that at a regular meeting?
It was at our organizational meeting in January, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Then I'm not unsure why there was a September 30th meeting. Because I didn't see it until three days later. So what am I supposed to be looking for on a daily basis for any changes?
I mean, it's not a Q and A, Mrs. Hughes, so.
I need to know.
Okay.
I need to know why the gang is all together again and how it happened.
We held interviews, and we appointed Mr. King.
Okay.
That's how it happened.
So, and I wasn't able to see the September 30th meeting, so that all my questions will be answered in that meeting?
I would think so. I mean, it was on public recording, just like the rest of our meetings, ma'am.
That's my points. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hughes. Donna Beam?
It's still on, okay. I'm here on behalf of our community about many issues happening in the school district. Aside from the unsafe bathroom stance you still have not rectified. Community members have reached out to a few of us about some unsafe and honestly disturbing issues. Let's start with buses. We have heard many issues about overcrowding, kids rushing to the bus at the end of the day in hopes that they get a seat, and also multiple behavior issues. In the cafeteria, behavior again is a concern as well. As the lines begin, as the lines being too long for kids to even buy lunch, those that do get to buy lunch are left with mere minutes to eat it. Back to behavior issues. In the hallways, as well as overcrowding, we have heard of teachers having to stand on stepstools to even see down the crowded hallways. If an issue does take place, we don't have enough teachers to break up fights, let alone monitor all areas in between classes. And thank you, Tracy, for standing up for the teachers needing subs tonight. Next up, this one is simply laughable, is teachers are being limited on paper as in the number of copies they can print for students. We have all heard about the shortage of books for students due to the massive influx of kids. So how are these kids supposed to have access to the book material until new ones can be purchased? Elementary especially. Those students cannot do everything on the computer. Handwriting skills are just as important as other skills at that young age. So what does a teacher do if they run out of their allotted paper? This is what we have been told in hearing, that some are asking for donations to receive extra credit to bring in paper or going and buying it on their own. Is that what has become acceptable for our teachers? The language barrier is also a concern in the community out there. I was glad to see that that was brought up tonight and that they're working on it. And because we can't fault the teachers and the students for that. So I do appreciate that that's being worked on. Keep finding solutions for that. For some, for some research that we have done since 2021, six admin, 15 certified teachers, 19 classified employees, and 16 supplemental employees have left for one reason or another. While some of those numbers, yes, were retiring, have you thought about why the others have left? Is it pay? Is it working condition? Is it lax, is it lax board policies causing more issues for teachers and staff? Is it overall lack of support available to our school staff? Sure, it's the superintendent's job to give you reports, but you seem to be keeping the mindset of this, this too shall pass. But at what cost? Do you care about the damage you are doing until it passes? Get out of your comfort zone and go see for yourself what our students and the staff deal with daily. My suggestion would be to go on a Friday afternoon. We have talked with families, a lot of families. One comment from a second grader was she was stressed out from school because it was chaos and she couldn't concentrate. Is what you are doing benefiting our kids? Ask yourself, you, the board, each one of you, ask yourself, are you, right now, if you are doing benefiting our kids or is it benefiting you? Speaking of benefits, our district has $1.7 million to spend for the benefits of students. Is spending money on fake grass benefiting our kids? Are you all going to sit up there and tell this community that the only thing you can think to spend $1.7 million on over the next two years is fake grass? $1.7 million to be used for our students, and we are going to get fake grass? On an ESAR resource page, it is clearly states ESAR funds can be used in hiring additional educators and support staff. After the number you have lost, you would think this would be your top priority. Lastly, this evening, in the board president's gushing speech over their appointment of the newest board member, it is mentioned that he's an excellent communicator and one who can patch relationships, and people need to be open, to open their minds and be willing to have a conversations. So on that note, when will this board be scheduling the public forum for this community they voted on?
Thank you, Mrs. Beam. Carolyn Wright?
Hello, my name's Carolyn Wright. Bethel graduate, class of 1990. Parents of Benton, class of 2018. Parents of Eily, class of 20, no, 2016, 2018. They're gone now, so it's hard to keep it all track. Huge investor in the community and just standing here again, as I will every month, to remind you, the board, that not everyone in this community is homophobic and transphobic, that we appreciate the work that you're doing, that we appreciate the advocacy that you're doing on behalf of the teachers and supporting the community. Thank you to the teachers who are here and the teachers who show up every day to do very difficult work under extraordinarily difficult circumstances. I am heartened to hear earlier comments questioning the amount of money that's being spent, especially in light of the amount of money that is having to be spent, public tax dollars, to respond to frivolous lawsuits. So I'm happy to hear that the community is now starting to notice that money can be spent on student services, buying paper, providing additional resources for children in need. It makes me feel better to know that our community is starting to listen and to perhaps have a change of heart and recognize that tax-paying dollars are better spent on students than on defending frivolous lawsuits. That's all I have to say tonight. Thank you again to the board. Thank you to the teachers and the subs and the bus drivers who show up every single day. I think it's easy to take potshots at what's going wrong, but I think it's important to recognize everything that's going well. And I'm proud to be part of a community that's welcoming families in need. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Wright. Josh Brewer?
Hello, my name's Josh Brewer. The purpose for me speaking tonight is that I want to bring up the lunchroom short staff situation. There are two positions that have been vacant. One since the end of 2020 school year and the other since May of this year, which has resulted in the staff being overworked and lacking the proper resources to do their jobs. We have been told multiple times someone would be hired to take these positions. I know this year had been a little different with Mr. Crispin being hired, stepping in and trying to find a new head cook, which he did. I'm not sure if Mr. Crispin had been aware of the roles of head cook as the new lady that was hired quit two days later. Based on my understanding, what these positions pay are not livable wages, so I'm not sure if that could be scaring anyone in a way. To add to that, I personally know of a few community members that have filled out applications the past two years to help out in the lunchroom but have yet to receive any communication back. In summary, I'd like to see more accountability to the lunchroom staffing issue by making it a top priority. Additionally, there needs to be more substitute help while two vacant positions are being filled. If somebody could please update the community on how that search is going, that would be great. And last thing, Mr. King, I just want to congratulate you on joining the board and hope that you will be a valuable asset to the board.
That's it. I do have one question about fifth grade, the Camp Curran stuff. Did you guys talk about why that, why they can't sleep over anymore? Is that just something the camp does, or, if you don't mind me asking?
Honestly, I don't know that that's a me thing, honestly.
Okay, okay, no problem.
But you're welcome to contact the middle school principal or
Okay.
or elementary principal, that's fifth grade, right? Fifth grade elementary principal would be probably the best person to talk to about that.
Thank you.
To start there, and then we'll come up to us if you need to.
Yeah, yeah, I got you.
Thank you, Mr. Brewer. Appreciate your comments. Mrs. Reese?
Okay. I just have a couple of things on process. So you know that, you guys know that I'm a very public person. I like things to happen in public. So I was pretty disappointed when the new board member appointee process was done completely behind closed doors with no community input. And especially given that it's an elected position. And normally, it's 100% community input. So just wanted to mention that. I know it's not illegal to do it in executive session, but it can also be done publicly. And another process that I'm a little concerned about is the Facilities Committee. I brought this up in the previous meeting. It seems to become a status meeting when the purpose was to weigh the options and recommend to the board. But now everything's decided in the core meetings. So what comes to the Facilities meeting is just, here's the decision. So using the example of the turf money, $750,000, I think everybody would like to have artificial turf. You know, it'd be a great thing to have. But it's a matter of priorities and need versus want, especially if we don't have enough classrooms, and we will continue to not have enough classrooms. So one thing that's come up in the past is if it's the right thing to do, just explain, explain to the community why the decision is what it is or what the options are. So not to make the decision behind closed doors, which is what happened with this high school, and we all know where that went. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Reese. Carolyn Ricker?
Good evening. For those that don't know me, I'm Carolyn Ricker. I've been living in this community for 10 years now. Three graduates and one in high school right now. For me, living in Bethel Township has been a roller coaster ride. Some ups, some downs, but for the most part, it's been up. And I just wanted to thank the board. When Lyda joined, I also was a write-in. Not a lot of people knew that. But I'm grateful that Lyda won. Just so mind-blowing, when I can come to these meetings, what you guys have to deal with, the contentions and the decisions. And I am very grateful for all of you, for the time and the dedication you have to this school and to our children. Thank you, Mr. King, for coming back and fulfilling the position of an elected person who decided to, I feel like let the board down by leaving. So I appreciate you coming back. I also wanted to have a shout-out to the art teacher. She, you know, it's very easy for teachers, I'm sorry, if this offends anybody, but it's easy for teachers to tell you when your child is doing something wrong. And we received a very wonderful email from the high school art teacher about my son, and very positive. And my son thrives on positivity, and he just completely shuts down in negativity. So I just wanted to give a shout-out to her, and I appreciate her, and I appreciate all the teachers that are positive and help. As I'm trying to finish raising my last child, sometimes it's a challenge. I think all of them are a challenge, but sometimes I'm like, ah, fourth kid. I'm going to get through this. Jacob, I don't know how you have more than that, but it's. And one little thing, as I didn't realize, with the kitchen staff and things like that. Ever since this wing was built with that kitchen, everybody knows how much I love to cook. It's been disheartening to watch so much of that equipment not be used. And that's what I would love to see happen with whatever direction the new cook goes, is actual cooking for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ricker. Emily Rose?
Just a couple of points I want to talk about. If I could think of one thing that the board could do to further divide the community, it would be to vote back in the board member that began all of this. I don't know him personally, but I know it began with him and the superintendent. I also couldn't help but notice how many times the board president said she couldn't be happier with the results of the interview, interviews. But frankly, the community couldn't be more disappointed. This has become what three board members want and not what the community wants. Another thing that happened at the last special meeting that I just wanted to point out. A board member opposing the new selected board member spoke out but was attacked by the president of the board for speaking her own opinion. The board president said six times that this person's opinion was basically a personal attack, and that was just for stating her opinion. We can't even have our own opinions now, let alone state them without being attacked. On another note, I support the Turkish community and respect their religious beliefs. I spoke to a 28-year Bethel local schools employee this week in nutritional services. She advised me that we stopped serving pork five or six years ago to accommodate the Turkish community's religious beliefs. I'm sure you can see where I'm going with this. Not sure why our religious beliefs aren't being considered. Lastly, a couple of meetings ago- Lastly, a couple meetings ago, a community member spoke out and encouraged us to take our children elsewhere if we weren't comfortable with the unsafe transgender bathroom policy. Just imagine if we told the transgender students the same. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Kenneth Bailey?
I'm back again to support the school board, and their efforts, and say I appreciate the conditions you have to work under. It is indeed surprising to me that we have such division. Title IX is 50 years old. It was enacted on June 23rd, 1972, under President Nixon. The intent of that resolution, that amendment, was for equal, education amendment was to prohibit federal, provide federal funding for educational institutions without discrimination on sex. And that has been a benefit to young ladies over this past 50 years. We now have equal funding in most cases for sports. Before that, we only had a one-tenth the funding for women's sports as the men's sports had. And I think that's been a great improvement for equal access to sports facilities. The two lawsuits we have pending now, Donna Beam's May lawsuit was put on hold in June, had no standing, there was no person who had been assaulted. If anybody had ever been assaulted in the school system, they would go to jail, or to juvenile court, or be expelled from school. They would not be removing school board members. From my research, this is not a local issue. This is a state issue, and a national issue to divide people and to create distrust among our people. There has been no assault of anyone in this school system, or any other school system I know about. If there was an assault, the proper procedure would be to remove that person from the school system, but not remove the school board. That seems to be ludicrous. The second lawsuit, the young lady from the Methodist church, the church administrator, filed a suit about the procedures on the school board back in December. I think there is no standing for that lawsuit. Another frivolous lawsuit with no victim, with no evidence, who has not been taken to court, has, will not be taken to court, they're looking for chaos and mistrust in the community. Third issue is funding. I visit restaurants, most of the restaurants have no dining anymore, they cannot hire people, even at $15 an hour, and that is just part of the economic situation we have. It is impossible to find people to work, and even at $15 an hour, that is hard to raise a family on. So I appreciate your efforts to find staff in this very tight economic conditions, the very low unemployment rate, about 3.2%, and people who are willing to work for that salary. God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Is that all, Mrs. Higgin? Okay. And that concludes the public participation portion this evening, thank you all very much for your time and for your comments. Is there a need for executive session this evening? Any from you? Any from anybody else? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion for adjournment?
I'll move.
Was that you, Mr. Elam?
Yes.
Mr. Elam with the motion, is there a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mr. King, for the second. Suppose there's no need for discussion? Can we move on to the vote, please?
Mr. Elam?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Sebastian?
Yes.
Adjourning with a 4-0 vote at 8:54 PM. Again, thank you all so much for your time and for your attendance, thank you to the trustees especially for your attendance, appreciate you very much.